All right, let me tell us meeting as first by the town council to order from Monday 2/23. You do the roll call for me.
Present.
Councilman Bennet.
Present.
Mayor Nass.
Present.
Councilwoman Holmes.
Present.
Councilwoman Anderson.
Present.
All right. You all have the agenda in front of you. For tonight's meeting. Looks like it's going quite extensive, but. I don't see any concerns or any changes, so if. Take a motion and a second to approve the agenda for tonight's meeting.
Make a motion to approve the meeting.
One motion.
Assistant.
Would you all favor approving tonight's agenda? All right, would you please stand with me? What do you wish to mention?
Attention, salute, and applause. Our loyal agents, we through the flag, on the United States of America, and in the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's great. Eternal Father, we're grateful for the opportunity to be here today, these beautiful mountains with these wonderful people. We ask your blessing on this evening, thus our decision-making, give us wisdom, help us to treat all the way that you would want to treat all of us treated. Give us wisdom beyond our own ability to process more than we. In the name of Jesus, we pray.
All right, we have minutes from our previous meetings tonight, let's take the oldest first. Special comment we held at 4:00 P.M. on May 29th. Have a chance to look over those. Take a motion to approve of the next.
Before we approve those, there is one on page six. It's listed in the South Coast, it should be in all sections. That will duck those that change. I'm going to motion to approve.
All right.
I'll say it again.
Motion, all right, we do approve the meeting minutes on May 29th and second of May.
Yes.
I want to approve the minutes on May 29th.
Yeah.
You also have your packet to June 9th, meeting that was our regular 5:30 meeting. Make a motion to approve the second of that also. Have a look down.
Make a motion to approve the minutes for June 9th.
Thank you, Jack. Got to have a second.
Second.
About the other five. All right. This is right along the public comment period. Do you have some other side that could further comment on that?
Yes.
Who is first?
Sharon.
All right, Sharon, you want to read this little. Your public comment is limited to three being shared. This is time for you to provide in chair of general thoughts with the town council. Individuals who desire to make public comment less complete assignment sheet which you have, and speak from the lecture unless physically unable, but through the explore ahead.
Okay, thank you. I'm Sharon Wicher, I'm a Mitchell County resident and retired librarian, and I'm here to thank you for sending the agreement back for revision and considering that revision for the River Valley Regional Library tonight. When I was a kid in the 1960s, my parents taught me to set up a book in China. And it wasn't the day binding, it was the special library binding. Because my parents knew that I was a really curious kid, and probably wear out those psychopaths. But of course, back in the 1960s, the knowledge of the world was in those 25 volumes, you know? At least that's what a lot of us thought, that we could turn to one and find the article that we wanted. The world has really changed, but at the time, my parents really thought that they were setting me up for success. And if you approve the revised agreement tonight, I feel like you'll be setting the regional library up for success. Public libraries are really critical in our communities. They provide the collections in different formats for different reading levels representing different perspectives. That provide authoritative viewpoint, they provide current information when it's really relevant. If you're looking for a gardening book, one that's 10 or 15 years old might be okay. But if you're looking for medical information about for your mother to help her out with something, you want something that's really current. And so you want it also to be relevant to you, and relevant to your life, and relevant to the needs of your community. But perhaps the most important thing, our public libraries are our staff, our professionals and our paraprofessional staff. And they're the ones who really help our citizens gain those information literacy skills, so they can be informed citizens, make good decisions about a range of things, something as simple as buying a new appliance. You know, you can look at somebody's blog on the web, and this is Joe, interview of Iowa, and does he really know about appliances? But a librarian might really point you towards something like consumer reports, which is an example of something that's authoritative, and it's really going to be current information on new appliances. So that's the critical thing that libraries do, and I hope that this new agreement will be approved. And just to close, the ALA in 1953, when they put out their freedom to read statement during the Carter era said, "We trust the people of this nation to make their own decisions about what to believe, read, and believe." So I hope you'll support the new agreement tonight, and thanks for your time.
Thank you, thank you, Sharon. There you go. Current, there's a debate, do we have any more?
Kendall Reed.
Reed.
Good evening, mayor and councilmembers. I'm Kendall Reed, I'm a Mitchell County resident, and I feel to thank you for seeking revisions to the Tullow River Valley Regional Library. I believe that revised agreement can be misnomered in establishing a robust new Mitchell County library. I encourage you to vote in support of the revised agreement. Public libraries play an important role in literacy, skills building, intellectual growth, and informed citizenship. So that both children and adults can be active participants in the democracy to which we pledge our allegiance. As you've reflected, Thomas Jefferson, the major clarity, believe libraries will do much to support a skilled workforce and informed record. Armed officials and citizens of Spruce Pine, Mitchell County, Avery County, should be confident that the new regional library will continue to provide those essential services. Thanks again for the opportunity to speak on this one issue.
I do miss you, Chris. Hey, what else?
Yes.
Four in this one.
You don't have any questions for me, thank you. I'll try to agree. I've got three parts to what I want to say, I would hope to get to them. A, I want to talk about ALA, American Library Association, which I inform myself about, and I want to tell you, people are very, and they're difficult. It's more, it takes more than I ever dreamed from what I've read. And they are professionals, and they really know how to do their job, especially the ones here in our city, town. This bit about being a professional is real smart, really important to remember. If you go into a store, and you like it, you go back, right? If you don't, you don't go back, you have a choice. And if you go into a restaurant, if you like it, you'll go back, if you don't, you won't. It's the same as any library book that's available. You like it, take it, you don't like it, don't. It's your choice. Second part, B, this is brevity for me, because I find it difficult to be brevity. I was upset when somebody wanted to put in community values, because I think we don't really have a community of values, because, for example, I don't steal, ever. And yet, people have stolen books from our library that they did not want. People read during elections, some people steal the other people's signs, and so on and so forth. Also, people are all different in their own different ways. Yes, there's certain, we all, you know, stand and walk and talk, blah, 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 most of us. I am different from others, I also have a lot in common with others. All people are not alike in every way. I get this bit about people who took away books, they want to protect children. The only way you can protect children is to tell them what reality is, so they can learn how to deal with it, which is very difficult. There are some things that are just too hard, I don't want kids to know. I don't want them to know about war, I don't want them to know about Holocaust, on and on and on. However, there's a difference between protecting them and not giving them a start, where they know what is real in the world. Okay, that's enough of that, I'm getting as brief as I can see, trying to convince you. Is that my time? I thought it was, I did pretty darn good.
Thank you, Mr. Daniels.
Thank you, you're welcome.
All right. On number three on our agenda in the night is public hearing for our budget ordinance, 2025-01, second reading for fiscal year 2526. And would you?
Uh, Mr. Mary, this will be the time where we'll have a public hearing, if there's anybody who wishes to speak regarding anybody, and then under action items, I'll go approve the actual budget itself for the hearing.
All right, it's time. Consider ourselves in public hearing, if anybody wants to comment or make a comment on our new year of 2025 fiscal year budget for town Spruce Pine. Anybody here would call in or bid? If not, then I consider our public hearing closed. We'll move on to item number four in our action again.
Uh, Mr. Mary, this part will be for the preliminary non-abiding votes. This will be the same as the first reading for the budget. And this is to satisfy the concerns of North Carolina General Statute 14-234.3, that council will hold a secondly preliminary non-abiding vote on binding appropriations for any nonprofit entity where council members serve on the nonprofit board. While this preliminary vote is non-abiding, it will allow the impacted council meeting to, on the record, demonstrate his or her recusal from the appropriation for the impacted nonprofit entity, but still allow the council member to vote for the budget overall budget ordinance. So the first item that would be for a non-abiding vote would be the appropriation for the Spruce Pine Library. So council members who serve on that board may recuse themselves.
Would you can make a motion to adjourn?
General. Well, the guy who just recused himself just walked out the door. You can just take note that council member Pike just refused himself to vote, he is the same member of the Spruce Pine Library Board.
All right, that's part of our budget. Spruce Pine Library, one of our 15th, so it's a really fun one. Do I have a motion?
I think I should reapprove the appropriation for the Spruce Pine Library on our 2025.
A motion, I bid, I have a second, so, second of May. I want to pay tribute to appropriations for Spruce Pine Library.
And that most would just have the, the, the.
All right, this next one is appropriations for the Spruce Pine Main Street.
This one requires to be recused, so upon Main Street board and the executive committee.
All right, and I'll have to refuse myself, that also, that I served on our board in the Main Street community. So I'll not vote for that.
I think you just might be good.
Yeah.
Some more sayin' him.
Lovely, I'll tell him.
So Jackie's already expressed her refusal on the board, I have asked for a few thoughts. Now I mean, is motion for him to be recused from the state? I think it would be recused from the state.
Second.
Second.
I'll have a favor.
So will you name the lead or?
We don't, we don't get it. Long as we don't have any.
I just get to go into some kind of discussion. So we go on to the ordinance, the second reading of the presentation of 2526 town Spruce Pine budget for consideration. So this is the appropriation, just looking at the appropriation of Spruce Pine Main Street. Just.
Can I make a motion where you approve the appropriations for Spruce Pine Main Street Inc. in our 2025 budget?
Third, second, I'm second. I'm in favor. So good.
All right. And the end of this section, Adams also on our 2025 second reading of the fiscal budget. Consideration and adoption, Dan will you take over and show forward.
Yeah, you can. Uh, so at the May 29th, 2024, special call to town council meeting. Spruce Pine Town Council was presented with first reading of the fiscal year 2025, 2026, budget, uh, was per two, is that why 26 budget ordinance? That would be ordinance 2025.001. Included in this packet is the final reading of the proposed budget for FY26. Within this revised are the packet tonight, the following amendments that have been made to the budget since the first reading. The first amendment would be the 2.5% COLA increases that were proposed for an amount of $46,903.81 have been removed. The proposed 0% to 3% performance-based merit increases for an amount of $61,630.70 have been removed. And those funds have been redirected into a item of what's referred to as compensation classification study results for a total amount of $108,534.81. So to give the background on that, staff has received the preliminary results of the compensation classification study that was done by the North Carolina League of Municipalities Match Group. And due to what's referred to as significant compression across the entire departments for the town, the funds we will need to start the process of decompressing those positions, we have elected to keep the budget balanced as it was in the original meeting by removing those COLAs and merit increases for this year fiscal year only. And supplanting that with the amount of money that will start the compression reduction on salaries for everybody from public works to police across the board. So within that, the match group will be present at council at the July 28th meeting to present the overall study results, the market research that they conducted on the surrounding municipalities, and how they arrived at the dollars, and where we're at. I'm not looking, we can, I'm here to answer any questions, but this isn't so much about the presentation of that study, but just demonstrating that we didn't raise the money any higher to compensate for that, rather we exchanged it. So then, so that will secure the dollars. What I can say is those dollars do not address the entire amount of compression, but it does give a start. And she will be here to explain how we arrived at that after a lot of back and forth, uh, to staff and how they've actually worked for this year to avoid falling off the balance. So with that said, those are the only changes between first and second reading of the budget. If there's any questions about any other items, we're happy to answer those. Outside of that, staff, you can make the council for discussion, or amendment, or adoption.
If those changes may, does not change a dollar figure of our budget either way?
Uh, no. Are you?
Yeah, so. If you're ready to approve our fiscal budget, for year 25, 26, that information, that very specific.
One question, it's on the portion of, is the zone been taken out of there?
No, sir, it has not.
So it's only listed at 500.
Well, it's just the salary portion. So that includes benefits, so. So when we do a position, we look at benefits and insurance and whole, whole part, so we're in the same side of you.
Anybody else have anything more to discuss before we move on to the other?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion if we accept and approve this budget for the 2026 year.
All right, I have a motion to approve. The budget by Jake. I'll say it. Second, you're right. All right then, I need a vote, all approval of the budget. I'll be done, and raise that a bunch. All right. We have a vote, and we'll approve the budget next year. Good deal. Next thing I'll argue is a budget amendment last year. There's someone you got for us?
I have a lengthy budget amendment here, just to recognize some extra income that we've received this last quarter, and some extra expenses. We had an increase in revenues of $364,268, and that's also, that's been offset by the expenses. We have some extra expenses in public parks department with their salaries to the town. It also has some extra expenses as far as supplies and materials, some model expenses and such. But it is, it is balanced for the increase in revenues of $364,268, both at revenue and expenses.
Yes, that's right. You're committed with fine.
You're going to persuade yourself to do.
Oh, guys, yeah.
We're also recognizing that some paying reimbursements for police department over time. All there is.
$66,000.
All right then, I need a motion and a second to approve this budget amendment for 24, 25 fiscal year budget. Motion. Motion, all right.
Second.
Second, I bid. All better? Next, library agreement. Having in your packet also, and I'm going to sit down and read it, read it, let's do it. Making money, you think, library, sorry, you do.
Yeah, can I ask a couple questions for plantation before we do? On the, the copy that I looked at, there was a line strictly about an at-large member. Will the board of directors have an at-large member today?
No, the compromise position was, and this is in the packet, what's in the packet for you. Avery County will have four members, one by their county commissioners. And Mitchell County and Spruce Pine will collectively have four members. Two from Mitchell County, one by Mitchell County commissioners, two from the town Spruce Pine, which the, the board. The initial idea was to have an. The initial idea was to have an at-large member, but that went back when it was a two-two-two selection. And so now, it's not ideal to have an even number board, but if you put an at-large member, one county, it's going to have one more member. So in an effort to satisfy concerns, if they reach a title, they have to set their own line for a period of time.
Can't wait to see what's to be done.
And the other question that I have, will the board retain their legal counsel? If their disputes arise, how will they handle legal issues?
Very good question. That will be for that board's determination to decide. They should have, because they should have, Mitch Terry who is representing them, representing that entity. But that will be for that board ultimately to decide how it wants to handle the issue.
Thank you.
I don't know that there was any mention made of this, but if I can ask, what I consider an obvious question, aside from voting out between Avery and Mitchell, are the contributions also matched to the Avery County? From the Avery, from Avery County, do they match what's prescribed from the region?
Uh, the contributions are all different from all three. And it was at the time that the original agreement was set up this way, with TNC County having four members. And so it was decided at the time that the best compromise position was to retain that original four-two-two. The Town Street Pine gives, I mean, it obviously has a bigger population that, or a more concentrated population than it serves than, for instance, Mitchell County, which has a smaller library, a smaller footprint. Avery has one library. You know, if Banner Rock, for example, wanted to, the town, Banner Rock wanted to form its library, then we would, we would look at the agreement in that respect. But each have different possibilities that roll their other plans, so it works too.
All of them, but thank you for your attention.
Even number board is under, but not more order, but really just like that. It's, you have to give us a great compassion because I don't want to just shake you every night. Anybody else have anything while we're?
Yes, sir. I'd like to ask one more thing.
Okay.
Under regional library director, it reads in consultation with the regional department, shall develop policies and procedures for acquisition of any materials. Such policies and procedures shall be content and viewpoint neutral. May I have a definition of content and viewpoint neutral?
Yeah, so first, presumably the library system will just adopt the policies that it currently has from Avery. They can check those, of course, but I presume that they have policies and they'll follow those policies. Or they can adopt all new policies if they want. Content and viewpoint neutral is that the policy that will be written will not favor any particular viewpoint or particular content, meaning that if, if someone disagrees, for example, with a book or a particular policy, the, the policy will be written neutral so that all parties will adopt whatever at book acquisition, not based on if they like the book or they don't like the book or a viewpoint of that. Now, there is a procedure that would allow for someone to object to a book that's in the library's residence. And that would be a policy that they also would have to adopt if they don't currently have one. So there are ways to challenge books or to challenge anything that a citizen would want to challenge. But they would have to go through policy to do that. So in other words, the library is not putting its thumb on, we're not going to have books out at. So why policy will be a balanced policy that will look at a holistic way of choosing the books that they choose, not based on any particular view or any particular content.
So this word is, is for the library's protection, I suppose.
It's worded to meet the constitutional requirements for the library that, that they can't, the library can't, for instance, choose books based only on its views or on content. Now again, that does not mean that citizens can't challenge a book or whatever they want to challenge. But there, there's policy and procedures about how to do that. And presumably they would have a reason why they're doing it, and then there's an opportunity to have a hearing before the board as to what he wants to, why they want to challenge them. So it's, it's not the library that's putting those restrictions on the original acquisition books. And it's giving citizens the right to challenge what they may feel inappropriate about. So it meets all the criteria of the first amendment is what we're trying, again, that's the, the goal is to try to put the library out of business of not choosing, and I'm not saying any words, but not choosing my books that it will have in the library based on. So that's why we can do, that's, that's why the wording viewpoint neutral and content neutral is a, the first amendment phrase to make sure that there is no designated criteria in how you fix.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Daniel, before you go back to focusing on the safe. If not, they have a motion and a second to approve the library, regional library. A motion by Roger, man, I'll give a second.
Second.
About that. All in favor of approval of a library, regional library system agreement? Okay. Nicely approved.
Thank you, Joe.
Next thing we have on our agenda is our top director with the Street Pine Department. Then that's, you need to explain those.
Uh, I can give it over to you, Mr. Mayor. So the fire services agreement that the town has is with the Street Pine Volunteer Fire Department. The current agreement that's been in place was a ten-year agreement. And that is set to sunset or expire on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. There's no changes to the levels of service that's been requested of the fire chief. And there's nothing that relates to the terms of operations. The one request was, or one change, actually it's two, is the revised agreement is for six years as opposed to ten. So that would be June thirtieth of twenty thirty-three, twenty thirty-one, those things. And the revised agreement is, there's been a request made that an increase to the rescue services portion be increased from a quarter of one percent to a half of one percent. Staff roughly estimates this to be about five thousand plus minus dollar a year adjustment to those funds for the emergency services part. And that would be basically for those standing hours for those volunteers and their services. So that's really the, the only change. And it's so, and I'm not trying to be vague in terms of approximately and estimations, but the percentages are based on our tax. So that can obviously go up and down a little, so we could see some fluctuations. So it might be five thousand one year, it could be six another, it could be four the next. So there's a little variation, but regardless, you're not going to see a substantial amount of money to come with that quarter of one percent request for an increase. So outside of that, the contract with the resolution were included in the packet. And we're here for council's consideration and adoption. And I'm here to answer your questions, Mr. Mayor.
Maybe I have any questions. All right. All right then, I'll take a motion and a second to approve our town fire services agreement with the Street Pine Fire Department for a period of six years.
That's still good.
Much protect. My second motion. All right. All in favor of approval? Yeah, I'm out.
All right.
Next thing on our agenda. Purchase of a street sweeper for a county, maybe one else. Getting the flood.
Uh, well, Mr. Mayor, if you want, I can give a little overview of this part too. So as, as everybody's aware, Darren Marley, the street sweeper that the town owned, which was a twenty nineteen Elgin street sweeper, was washed down the river. And that's been since recovered, turned in on insurance, and we no longer have that machine in our position. Since then, staff has been looking at replacement machines. We've looked at a couple of different companies and we've demoed a couple of options. One is for you tonight, is a Schwarze eight-four storm. This is a US-made and manufactured machine, they're made in Alabama. And they came up and brought it up for the day here about two or three weeks ago. We went out and gave a shakedown in some various areas and were pretty impressed with its performance. Public Works was really impressed. It's got a lot of good features that the old machine did not have. It's fairly as much of a like-for-like replacement of the old one as it can be. There's a slight difference in the hopper size and some little things there. Outside of that, it certainly do the work beyond what we need. The good news is, is the machine total is five hundred thousand less than the Elgin machines that we were looking at, that we lost. Those machines are closer to three hundred and forty thousand dollars. So this is a very powerful machine, the replacement. So on our insurance, the town got a hundred and eighty-seven thousand two hundred and thirty-three dollars, thirty-three cents. That's from the league's insurance. And this machine with the price backed, with the insurance backed out, we'd have a balance of fifty-one thousand three hundred and forty-eight dollars and seventy-three cents. And we are working, that also includes the five-year extension warranty on the machine. So we're working with FEMA, our grants administrator is working diligently to try to recruit that remaining fifty-one thousand dollars, we'll call it fifty-two thousand. But I will just say, if there's any reasons or something that either A, we don't get the full dollar amount from FEMA or B, they don't give us any of it for some reason, we would come back. And obviously there'd be a question and there'd be new requests for the remaining of the funding. So tonight's request is to grant the, go ahead, acquire the machine and finish up the contract. They have agreed to give us the machine with a ten percent deposit and, and then make it ours while we finish finalizing our details with FEMA and securing the remaining dollars for that machine. So this machine came at a pretty substantial discount of about twenty percent. It was a demo unit, however, it only had seven hours on that M.O.E. So it's a very, very generally used machine. So I answer any questions we have. Other than that, that's, that's the, the request.
Daniel, what would local service be? Don't have to go back to Alabama or something.
No, the machine is actually very highly serviceable. A lot of the, what we would call consumables on the street sweeper are bolt-on parts versus our old Elgin had a lot of welded parts. And there's actually already some cut and patch and cut and replace on that Elgin machine in the time period we've had. So the majority of your consumer, our consumable wear and tear items will be done in-house by the public work staff. And then if there's anything more significant than that, it's got a Cummins backup generator or backup engine on it, and it runs off of a diesel four-BZ engine. So very reliable machine. And then with the warranty items, they will actually service it here in North Carolina and have all the local insurance. Anybody else have any other questions about the street sweeper?
Glad to have one back, our streets next week. All right, motion and a second to approve. Purchase of this street sweeper. So move on. Motion by Ron.
Second.
All in favor? We expand on the fact. All right. First week, thanks for the consideration for me.
Yes, and State Treasurer's Office has contacted me and are willing to give a second round of these loans, these interest-free loans, and then out of one point eight million dollars and some change. And I just need board approval, which they will pursue with being nice balance. They originally give us about two point eight. So we have that in the bank and that helps if we need to do less balance until we receive money to deal with higher payables. And in the meantime, we can draw interest in the town and is able to keep that in the balance. Just need board approval to be able to pursue.
You know, Brian, I'd like to know if you agree. All right, a motion for a lot. About that. All clear? Good deal. All right, you also have a contract from our office here, don't you?
We have also a amendment to the foreign cash flow loan, which describes with the term of repayment, which just set that we have to adopt to be able to save the first round of cash flow money as far as repayment. In the original contract, I had said that if we get FEMA reimbursement and federal funds, we have to pay it back within five days and ask them, and it has to be cross-through. And your package will say that the changes within that, which is our right. So I just need approval on that, so it's sent back to State Treasurer's Office.
All right, I have a motion and a second approval for the amendment to round one of the state cash flow.
Amendment.
A second. I may ask a second, don't blame. All clear?
All right.
Now, you're on.
And with the requirements that audit has as far as FEMA funds, the town will be under a single audit this year, an open audit, which increases our audit cost. We originally repay around twenty-three thousand. And the new contract has increased to forty thousand because of all the restrictions that we have as far as federal and state spending. And with that being said, I have checked with our grants administrator and.
And with that being said, I have checked with our grants administration and FEMA funds, those categories that are just administrative funds, and should be able to cover the difference on what our audit cost is, because that is a requirement that FEMA has as far as doing that, single audit. So we just, we just have to freeze this for thirteen hours to be able to conduct the audit and do the sensitive audit section of that.
So you're toward Darren's point, Paul. All right, I have a motion, second, for this, our contract with our office. All right. Second. All clear?
All right.
All good. You're not going to run long. You also have in your package a, I mean, a sure check, and contract for water and wastewater treatment.
If you want, I can give just a quick overview. So the service agreement is for three years. This is to operate, maintain, and manage our water and our wastewater plants. This is with the O.R. This is in response to a bid that was done, I believe, at the end of last year. And so the cost for this first fiscal year that we've got in this year's budget is nine hundred and sixty-eight thousand, three hundred and seventy-eight dollars for that contract. The preceding years will be negotiated on or before January fifteenth of each fiscal year. And in the section eight point two of that contract is the best referral for, to demonstrate on how those future contracts will be negotiated. However, the general summary is they will be based on the employer cost index, or what we refer to as ECI, and then also the CPI, which would be the consumer price index, and the evaluation they put in there. The terms for the agreement are for the initial three years, but then the agreement shall auto-renew for the subsequent one year, unless noted by either party within one point every each contract. So that is the summary of our new wastewater, groundwater treatment plant contract.
All right. Ten proposals from ten different counties, we sit through all that with them, but we chose to go back with the O.R. So I'll take a motion and a second to approve this three-year contract with the O.R., our water and wastewater treatment. So move on. Motion, all right. A second motion. All right. All right. Dr. Major's report. Daniel, what do you got for us?
Well, to begin with, as I told you earlier this week, we go through thirteen action items in less than an hour. I told you, you're all crazy. I'm thankful for that, so I'll keep this doing around long, pretty quick. The force not taking off today tonight. On the big stuff, FEMA, we have seven more projects approaching final obligations. Those would be Brad Reagan Park, Spruce Pine, city damaged roads, storm drain damages, the Toa River Pump House, the citywide road damage, and now Spruce Pine, or called washouts on our record. So those are all together, seven separate projects that are up for the next round of obligations. And just a reminder, as we're going through all the FEMA process, once we get to what's called the obligated part, that's the part where we actually get money. So that's where we go to the state from the federal side, and then generally, in about thirty days, we see funding from there. So hopefully, we can keep those pushing, pushing along expeditiously. We have net internally on FEMA projects, and that will have grants administrator to discuss more of our cost estimation procedures to help move the projects along a lot quicker. So we're just trying to deal with all things upfront. We do have an RFT drafted for the wastewater treatment plant. I've almost finished reviewing my parts and then I'm going to check in or turn to take a look at it for any kind of legal items, and hopefully get that back to the grants administrator. Hopefully this week, I get that ready to bid out, and then we're working on for the park, Riverside Park, as well. We want to include Riverside Park and Brad Reagan Park kind of in that same RFT for designing bid build CA services that will inevitably be needed on the rebuild of those projects.
Excuse me. River Bend and Riverside or Brad Reagan?
Oh, I'm sorry. I say, well, you know, River Bend and Riverside.
Yeah.
Brad Reagan is already its own deal, they gave it this now. We're close to turning those in, so that one's pretty well wrapped up. The damages were not as significant for, you know, obviously on that part. So River Bend and Riverside will be the two that we lump into one RFT. The bridge, pedestrian bridge, the engineering team is, is High Country Engineering out of Asheville, and they are moving forward with designs and preliminary drawings and things, and we will be putting together some public engagement on what the new bridge will look like and how it would be tied together and those kinds of things. So we are moving, moving along on that. Our North Toe intake temporary pumps that are out there, those that's been extended, the pumps, keeping those on site and extending to August. That does not have anything to do with when we'll go live with our new intake setup that is permanent intake. So for explanation, our intake is where we get our water from at the river, and that was the line that was pulled down the ground by the flood and the building that was destroyed. So we've got everything back together, and we've done one test on it, and currently working on bugs with the SCADA system. And as soon as we get all that together, we'll be turning that back over to its pre-storm operations. And then those pumps will just most likely just be sitting there until August before they pull those out. So anyway, just an update on that. Other part is, as I know at the last council meeting, I just wanted to just bring this forward, there was a lot of conversation about the wastewater treatment plant and the screw press and a lot of the things. I just want to say on record that the plant is working at its appropriate measures. We are treating the five, six hundred thousand gallons a day that we're supposed to, we're getting good reports from DQ. The screw press thing is something we're working through, the kinks, we have not paid a dime for the screw press we have done here. Those funds have been withheld and we're going with hold until it's, until it's doing what it's supposed to do. So we will either have Hooper bring us another screw press that can do it, or we will keep our fine on until it does what it's supposed to do. So I just wanted to be clear that I've taken some time this last week to get in front of a few conversations to just put it out there that there's not anything detrimental happening. If it is an issue, we've got the trans, we're going on it, and we've got the proper people in place to fix that back to happen. Outside of that, event-wise, July fourth celebration is coming up. This is a big partnership between Quanus, the Chamber, the Main Street. Selco's came on as a sponsor this year. So we're looking to have the parade that's been around, and then afterwards, Spencer's been lining up some live music. We'll have some boot trucks and some vendors to kind of fill the gap between the parade and fireworks. I spoke with Fun Time, they set us up with some good bounce houses, that was part of the sponsorship. So we'll have a kid fun, kids' fun zone, and so it should be a good, good time, street festivities, and then we'll have fireworks. This is only on July fifth, Saturday. Parade starts at six, and the fireworks will be at dusk. So we'll be down there basically from six until the evening. If you, a business, anybody wants to be in the parade, please, there's an online Google Docs application that's on all of our social media. We can email that to you, if you want to call to the office here, call Luther with Quanus, however you want to do that. Please spread the word that we are taking applications for the parade. We'll do so pretty much up until just the week of the parade, so we'll have to cut it off some points of the board, so just spread the word about that. So, yeah. That's all I have, unless there's any questions from any council members.
Daniel, can we, if I just could go back over those seven areas that you've got, I was trying to run them.
Yeah, so Brad Reagan Park, Spruce Pine, damaged roads, the storm drain damage, which is different. Toa River Pump House, which is out of the, the Dan take. Citywide road damage, which is, is, is the road damage outside of, we have our Sprague Road, and then we have our city, outside of city areas, and then the Spruce Pine, washouts, just the different slides and different things we have.
I have one recommendation from the High Country Council government. House Bill seven fifty was defeated, and they're trying to backpedal and put it on another bill, House Bill two oh five. And it's a density issue where they're wanting, what, six houses on one acre of land. So they asked us to formally, as a team, recommend the right, I said that we agree that we do not support this bill. Last thing to vote against. Is it a six parade?
Yeah.
It's, no, you can down these.
Well, I understand there's some other things I'll say, maybe it'll be, maybe it'll get as far as some, but I haven't had a chance, I got the wrong, I was, it's House Bill two oh five, right?
Yeah.
I was two, six, and I can't find it. But everybody needs to look at House Bill two oh five and go over that bill. And you probably need to, next meeting, do a resolution, resolution on seven. But everybody needs to look at that bill over really close. What we're fixing to spend one hundred and one dollars on, for a stateful day, wait off.
Yeah, I'll look into that, I'll, I'll be honest, I haven't read into that, and I'm working, the High Country Council government's still working with on, as they're doing our zoning ordinance, but I'll re-look into that. Are you saying the bill is proposing that they will dictate statewide density?
Yeah.
Six per acre?
It was, I'm not exactly sure about six, but you know, we have setbacks and all these things, but they're wanting to undercut it and bring it in on the bottom of the bill, something we can do.
Yeah.
Also, from what I was reading, there's a lot of cut about just application in smaller towns, it's going to require, you know, a lot more manpower, it'll be more work for smaller administrations.
Well, that's a bit terrible, generally, six per acre is extremely high incentive for smaller families. So here's what the league wrote about it. It exposes rigid quasi-judicial standards, these requirements for local officials to make zoning decisions like courts based on hard evidence and expert testimony aside from hindsight discretion. They anticipate that would increase lawsuits and add cost to taxpayers and limit public participation. Conditional zoning would significantly be rendered almost useless under the new bill, which is a very key type of zoning, which the town's quoted out, or wasn't going to have. And mandates a one-size-fits-all, because of uniform development rules, that town fit all, and you do especially small ones, black things, no but stat. That's what the, if you're not on the email, you can get on the email from the league of municipalities, and they put out legislative documents every Friday afternoon. And that building is two oh five, and it does say swimming pools and house. That's the bill that, that tax.
Who's the author? Who's the incumbent?
Uh, you want to go there?
It's in the chart.
All right, well. We know what you think of me talking to you. Well, the primary sponsor is Steve Jarvis, who's a house member from Davidson County, Davidson and Davie counties. But it's kind of unclear, since the bill was split into another bill, whether or not he was a sponsor of that bill or not. So I'd have to dig a little deeper to figure that out.
Well, let's look closely at it, at our resolution. Is it correct?
Also, I don't know what House Bill number this is, but I know that there's discussion about closing your hospital along with four or five others, and I understand that the commission, commissioners are, drafted a letter of support for air hospital. I think we should do that. I was totally dismayed when I saw Williams Regional on the list. The resident standing, when I thought, have, are we, have we not been kicked out enough? It would lose the employment, should that close, would lose your healthcare. It's just all in our bad, if we see.
A lot of it has got to do with Medicare, Medicaid, care, Medicaid offices to present last.
I think it's better if federal.
Yeah.
Federal.
So maybe we can have that on the agenda next time, also have that, but it's a cool bit.
Yeah, I'm going to do two resolutions to be, I'll be sending an email off to council to Congressman Edwards, who would come with you for a visit, and I'll send a communication out, and he's here to talk about infrastructure, we're going to talk about.
All right, may, council member have anything else to report? Daniel, was you able to talk to Travis, or anybody about the generators we talked about, Mr. Mayor, was he with you?
Yes, I did, and that is true, emergency management is working through FEMA on those backup generators. And the last correspondence I got was Travis provided all the individual information to the EMS, state EMS department for those, those are much like projects and those are painful, I guess they were just a mystery, that force. So it does sound like, does sound like it's something that they're probably pushing through.
Very, very. Before you begin, generators are a bug space. All right, anything else we need to discuss while we're here in the mat? Speaking of mat field? Anything else, maybe if you're bored, maybe, while we're here. All right, then I'll take a motion to adjourn this week.
No, you can.
We are adjourned now. We are adjourned now.